Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's a little after six o'clock, not much. And welcome to the March 17th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone here that's here tonight and also those that are watching on television. I'd like to, at this time, ask Councilman Todd Pierceall to lead us in prayer, after which I'd like to ask Boy Scout Troop Six, Michael Murray, to come step right up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Okay, Councilman Pierceall.
Thank you, Mayor. In honor of St. Patrick's Day today, I'm going to read an Irish prayer, so if you'll bow your heads. "May God give you, for every storm, a rainbow, and for every tear, a smile; for every care, a promise, and a blessing in each trial; for every problem life sends, a faithful friend to share; for every sigh, a sweet song, and an answer for each prayer." Amen.
You're on, friend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Curlin and I thought about the possibility of spraying our hair green like that, but we chose to go the other way. Okay, he can do it. I'd like to have also a motion to excuse Councilman Kimball. He's out of town. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, item D is, well, we better have the adoption of the agenda, is the motion?
I think so.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, item D is a presentation by Mr. Matthew Freed, a presentation on Sims Park Eagle Scout Project. Is Freed, is that the way, right way? All right, Freed, okay, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all members of the council. My name is Matthew Freed. I'm with Troop Six in Gastonia, and I'm here today to talk about my Eagle project that was completed at Sims Legions Park. So, everyone here, it's a presentation. My project, my project was to build a 15-foot by 25-foot American flag in the outfield of Sims Legions Baseball Field. And all the materials were donated or purchased with donated funds. The flag was mainly made out of landscape timbers, recycled asphalt, rebar, and concrete stars, and then painted with heavy-duty paint, the kind that's used on roads. The supplies were purchased from Lowes Improvement Store using donated funds. Paint was donated by Sherwin-Williams, and the recycled asphalt was donated from the Parking and Recreation Department here, from the city. The first stage of my project was building the frame out at the field, and that mainly consisted of the city going out there, scalping the area on the hill. Then I and several volunteers went out there, took the landscape timbers, put it into the ground, and just made the general shape for the flag. As you can see, there are pictures. And here's a shot from distance of the flag. The second part of making the flag was putting recycled asphalt into the frame, and thanks to Michael Dillinger, who came out there with a city loader and also with help of volunteers with shovels, we placed all the asphalt into it, and then over the course of a few weeks with rainfall, the asphalt smoothed and flattened out into the flag. And then here's some images of the team working on it. Finally, the third stage consisted of taking concrete stars, which were actually made across the course of the project, using molds made by me and my grandfather, and using paint on the stars and the flag itself donated from Sherwin-Williams. Here is images of the flag being painted. Then, stars after being cast were painted white, all of them placed in correct positions for the flag. So, here are the stars, and then placing the stars out onto the flag. We actually had to use a ladder to get across to the blue section of the flag because the flag was actually too big and the hill was too steep. So, here we were setting the stars across the flag. And then afterwards, I and a few volunteers went back, touched up across the paint, made sure everything looked nice, including from a distance. And the flag, as you can see from the hill, it's fairly big, and you can also actually see it from the interstate that goes past the park. So, I would like to say thank you for the council, for hearing my project tonight. Chuck Dillinger, who's actually here with us, from the Parks and Recreation Department, Rocky Withers from Sherwin-Williams, Sabre 98 Technologies, the American Legion, Mike Siegfried, my scout master, Mr. Bobby Blutton, who's actually here with us in the audience today, and all the volunteers, around 25, 30 people who helped out with the project. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I was going to get you to step around to the, step around a little. Just shaking. Yeah? Didn't come back around.
Congratulations. Good job.
I've done that before. There we go.
I have some questions, could I ask?
Go right ahead, sir.
Matthew, could I ask you some questions on the project itself? How many hours did it take you?
Quite a few. For my project, that's an office I had to do when I was going in front of my board review, counting all the volunteer hours, it was around 125, like counting every single person's hours that worked there. But we worked out there for three or four bank days, about three hours each, and also when I was at home casting the stars, took a few hours. So, I want to say, me personally, probably about 20 hours working on it.
Excellent. Now, one other question. Are you an Eagle Scout? Have you gone through the board review for that?
Yes, I actually went through my board review in January, January 7th.
Congratulations, really.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations. Do you graduate this year?
I do. I go to school at Piedmont Community Charter School. I'm going to be graduating class of 2015, so, yes.
And where will you be going after graduation?
I'm not completely sure yet. I've gotten a few acceptances. I'm leaning towards UNC Charlotte, but I'm, like I said, I'm not completely sure.
Well, I would just encourage you to take your scouting skills and share them with other people.
Thank you.
Well, some experience. Thank you very much, sir. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
That's true. Okay, presentation, Ms. Amy Sifford, Director LMA Wiggins Memorial Committee. Reference LMA Wiggins Memorial Project update. Hello. How are you, ma'am? All my friends, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to be here to present this project. As some of you may or may not know, we've been trying to do something to honor LMA Wiggins for quite some time now. Our committee started as a, and we still are, a grassroots movement to honor LMA. We started in 2011. Since 2011, we've been able to achieve our 501-3C status. We have secured an artist who is interested in building the statue. He has already created a clay model of Ella. We call her Little Clay Ella. She's on display at the public library in conjunction with our project, our textile-inspired art project, which will be moving from the library at the end of the month and going downtown to Arts on Main. And Little Clay Ella will be there at Arts on Main, so people in the community can get a visual interpretation of what we hope will be a permanent life-size bronze model of LMA Wiggins. In addition to myself, Christina Horton is on our committee. She's one of LMA's great-granddaughters, and she has written a book about LMA. Hers is not the first book that has been written about LMA, which will spotlight the family's perspective of that time in our history. Also on our committee is George Taylor Loveland, who is a Belmont native, and he has also written a book for our little children, which documented his perspective of that time in our history. We all are familiar with, or I hope we all are familiar with, John Solomon's book, 1929, The Lower Ray Strike, which was also written about that time in our history. Also on our committee is Tammy Cantrell, who's a local artist who also helps organize our arts events. We also have Terry Cole, who is a lifelong resident of Gastonia. She's our secretary. So, we've been able to do a lot since 2011, and we wanted to get to this point where we could formally present our project to the city. Some of the things that we have coming up is, in April, we're going to unveil our first major fundraising project, and I'm not at liberty to say exactly what that is, but we do have a lot of really wonderful incentives for people who are interested in donating to our project. We're not asking the city for any money. Of course, we're not going to turn down any money from anybody, but what we really hope for is that the city will more or less give their blessing on this project, because I believe, as a lifelong resident of Gaston County and a product of the Mill Village, that it's time for LMA to be recognized in our city. And let me just tell you that the interest in this project is not only local. We have a Facebook page, the 911 friends that we have on our Facebook page. I'm just going to read a few of the states where people live. New York State and New York City, South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, Pennsylvania, California, Kansas, Wisconsin, Virginia, New Jersey, Maryland, Georgia, Wyoming, and Arizona. And I would like to read a few emails that have been sent to us. "Oh, my gosh, thank you so very much for your site, which has just given me exactly what I needed about LMA and her songs. I'm creating a research guide for the juniors at my high school who are studying of mice and men. Their teacher wants to give them a sense of the situation during the Great Depression, so she asked me to collect works by artists of the time period, and I was delighted to have found LMA's name and history while researching the time period. I wanted to have the lyrics available to the kids, and you made that possible." This teacher is from Arizona. "Dear friends, my name is fill-in-the-blank, and I'm an assistant professor of history at Georgia State University. I grew up a few blocks from the Lower Ray Mill, and I'm a big admirer of LMA Wiggins. If there's anything I can do to help with your project, please let me know." And another. "Hi, first of all, I'm amazed at the success of the whole memorial. Congrats. Secondly, I'm doing my Ivy History of the Americans' Internal Assessment of LMA. My question topic is, what impact did LMA Wiggins have on the events surrounding the Lower Ray Mill strike of 1929, and I was curious if you could lead me to any resources?" This is a senior at one of our high schools. And they go on and on. We've also been contacted by the union members of Freightliner and Firestone, who are interested in supporting our efforts. As far as what I believe having a monument or memorial for LMA, it covers a little bit of everything about us as a people in Gastonia. First of all, there's the music. She was a balladeer, and musicologists have long heralded her as one of the pioneers of American protest music as we know it. And also, Pete Seeger had recorded some of her ballads, and some other regional musicians have recorded her ballads. So, we have the music interest. Also, literature. After the strike, there were five novels written about the strike, and LMA was the central character of that story. She was the inspiration for the central character of that story. And that group of novels is called the Gastonia Novels. Sherwood Anderson, students of literature know who he is. He wrote Windsburg, Ohio. He also wrote a book. That LMA is one of the central figures. My mother, who is 82 years old, recently finished reading one of the novels called "To Make My Bread" by Grace Lumpkin, and my mother said to me, "This, these are my memories." And also, when we were doing a presentation in Bessemer City, she was reading this brochure that I'd like to give everyone, and the brochure is one of LMA's most famous songs, "The Mill Mother's Lament," and it's about needing money to buy shoes for her children. And my mother says to me, who is the oldest of 14 children, "When we were growing up and our shoes got holes in the bottom of them, we put cardboard in our shoes." So, what LMA, I think, is the missing link to our story, and honoring her finally, after all these years, is going to help us come full circle and help us create this, or recreate this identity, the strong identity that we once had as a city. As I said, I have lived here all my life. I've always known about LMA, so I always got a little taken aback when outsiders would come in here and try to tell me about my history, and they were always taken aback that people that they ran into really didn't know anything about LMA. So, the assumption is that we didn't care about LMA, that no one really wanted to remember LMA. That's not true. LMA has always been a part of our narrative, and what I'm hoping that we're going to do with this memorial and the generous contributions of people who support us is to help bring us full circle. So, thank you. I'd be glad to entertain any questions, if you have any. I hope I made sense.
Thank you, Amy. Doug?
Thank you, Ms. Sifford. Speak a little bit to, obviously, those that know the story of LMA know that she tragically lost her life during that period.
Yes, she did.
And also the police chief.
Absolutely, and we have a...
And speak to that, because I think it's important that people understand this is not a political...
Oh, no, it's not.
...type thing. It's definitely a statement on a time in our history, and it's just events that transpired, and it's important that we remember that, because it did shape how we are as a city today. But just speak on that, so people understand.
Okay. One of, about LMA is that other people outside of our community have controlled that narrative. We do have a lot of academics in Chapel Hill and Raleigh and the major universities that have embraced LMA and have made a point to talk about her when they speak of our region. I think what you're asking me to do is to talk about what happened and why we...
Well, it's my understanding you've actually spoken with some of the descendants of the Atterholt family.
Oh, yes.
You know, there were two losses of lives.
Yes.
Both individuals were on separate sides of an issue.
Sides of the issue, yes.
But you more or less have their blessing to do this, because they understand it is an important part of our history, and I wanted people to know that.
Yes. Chief Atterholt and LMA were victims of the strike and victims of the circumstances. And in 1929, it was a very different America. And of course, there are a lot of contextual issues that, I mean, you could talk about LMA in a class for a semester. So, I'm trying to be as brief as possible, but yeah, there was, LMA has always been a controversial figure, especially for people who were able to control the narrative. A lot of people in our city at that time did not want that incident to reflect badly on us as a people. So, LMA, given the fact that she was associated with the Communist Party who came down to lead the strike, that was one of the reasons why, why I believe and scholars believe that she was more or less written out of history or became a footnote to it. But if you, if you look at LMA and Chief Atterholt in terms of the context, the time, both of them were victims. LMA lived and worked in a time when women didn't have very many rights, and we still had child labors in the mill, which is another piece that she brings to our city's history. She's in history books all across the nation, and in higher education, people who study labor history, they hear about the Gastonia strike in 1929, and they hear about LMA, and they get the context, they get the big picture. However, in our community, I don't know that we were ever given a platform to talk about the time, that period of time. LMA represented, for my family, hard-working people who didn't have anything to give in terms of political, social, academic, or financial capital. She had nothing. She was barely literate. She had been left by her husband. She was raising children on her own, and she wanted to have a better life. And if you look at what the Communist Party, who wanted to unionize, what the issues that they wanted to promote was fairness. And if you look at their, what they wanted, we look at what they wanted back then, and we wonder, okay, that makes sense. I would want that, too. If I lived during that time, I would hope that I would have had the courage to stand up and say, "I would like to work for a decent wage, doing honest-day's work for a decent wage." And that's really what LMA represents. It's not communism, it's not anarchy, it's not to overthrow the government or any of those things. She was a Christian woman. She sang in church, and her ballads were sang to the tune of some well-known old gospel songs. They prayed at the meetings. She had a preacher preaching at her funeral. You know, there's a lot of, lot of things that, about LMA, that we just haven't been able to sort out in a public way. I hope that's making sense. It's a real complicated story. It's a big, huge story. One of the things that we hope to do at some point in time is to have an LMA Day and have people come that can hear the different parts of the story, whichever part they're interested in. You know, we have the history, we have the literature, we have music, we also have art. Her image has been recreated in a lot of artistic creations. John Rankin, who is one of our notable artists of our area, he has LMA's image in some of his works, and there's a new generation of, new generation of Gastonians that are embracing LMA. And I'm really excited, and I'm really hoping that even people who don't want to have a monument for LMA would step back and say, "Well, it's okay, because other people do." That we won't be excluded, that LMA's part and contribution to our history won't be excluded, that this is her time. And I'm afraid if we don't do it now, we may not ever do it. And let me just add one more thing. We have people all over the state, as well as the country, who are interested in our project, and we have some really good support. We were able to raise a good pit of money so far in order to get our 501-3C status. We now have a website, and the web address is in the brochure. I hope that you will all go look at the website. It's got links to all the different academic articles about LMA, not all of them, but several. Our state magazine did a piece on Gastonia and LMA in 2014, and that's a very well-read magazine. And I just think that it's time for us to own LMA, that she's ours, and we've allowed other people to control that narrative.
Questions? Agreed. Thank you very much, and I, we appreciate your good words. It's, that's, that's an excellent update on a very interesting project. You know, as a side note, Amy, I just have often wondered, and I sort of shake when I think about it, your mother, at 82, was oldest of 14.
Yes, my mother is a wonderful woman.
It has to be. But, you know, and I, I love my children to death, but 14 just makes me just shake and want to lay down somewhere. And that's the way it was back in the Depression, and with my family and my family, and so many others, 10 and 12 and 13 children, you know, and...
My story is our story.
Yeah.
Because we became a city on the backs of labor, and my story is similar to probably everybody that I know that is from Gastonia. It's our story, and LMA is a huge part of our story.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. We'll stay in close touch on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving along, if we may, to the consent agenda. You've had it, you've seen it, there's three items there. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, please. It's unanimous on the consent agenda. That'd be items one, two, and three there. Okay, into the regular agenda. Item four, Swimming Pool Management Agreement, Carolina Pool Management, $78,385, Mr. Chuck Dillinger, Director of Parks and... Dillinger, Director of Parks and Cultural Services.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would like to say, before Matthew walks out the door, that that was a fine project that he, that he did. I really enjoyed working with him. I will say this, that he came in and had less than four months before he turned 18, and I kind of cringe. I'm a little old, old for that kind of stuff. But he did a great job and got everything, got everything in, and it really looks good, and the American Legion guys had a hand in it, and they liked this project, too. So, I want to say that before I started my, my agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the attached pool management agreement is respectfully submitted by Parks and Recreation Department for council approval. The agreement is between the city and Carolina Pool Management, and they are to provide our pool management staff, certified lifeguards, water chemistry maintenance, and facility cleaning at Limeburger and Irwin Pools. The agreement would become effective, the date of execution, 2015, and will run through February 29th. And I did check, that is leap year next year, that is the correct date, of 2016, with an option for yearly renewals. There are three pool management companies in it that serve this area, and we received proposals from two of those that were responsive, with Carolina Pool Management proposal being the lowest by about $7,000. There are sufficient funds available in our expenditure budget to cover the cost. We'll save, the first year alone, and just salaries and wages will be about $5,000, and additional $5,000 will be realized in things like FICA tax, drug screening, or CPR certifications, supply and chemical costs. There are some other things that are equally as important as the, as the budgetary savings, and it lessens the city's liability. Carolina Pool Management will carry a $20 million liability insurance policy. They provide for the workers' compensation, a guarantee of certified lifeguards to fit our full schedule, and the city will collect and retain all revenues, and we currently have $78,000 currently budgeted for the revenue there. We've always, pools have always been a service that the city has provided, and at one time, before we renovated Limeburger Park Pool, I made a, we made a presentation where we were, we were spending about $3 to $3.5 per person to go in our pools, even after we collected things. With the renovations and the things, we're, we're not quite there, but we're really close to, to breaking even with, with those revenues versus the expenditures. Carolina Pool Management is an industry leader in the southeast, they're local, Charlotte Concord area, they have good references. We already do business with them, we purchase our chemicals from them. From time to time, we look at ways for private, private, to see if private vendors and companies can do things cheaper or better. I handled the pool management myself for 25 years and directly, and we, another 10 years have been handled by, by other folks in, in the department, and that's, that's a real tou, that's a real tough thing. And getting the lifeguards in and training them and all the certifications that they have to have, and now we're open through Labor Day, which is, is even another headache of getting enough lifeguards to do, you know, to do that work. So, with all that said, we do submit this for your consideration, and thank you for the consideration on this matter, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions of Mr. Dillinger? Yes, ma'am.
Is this the first time we've outsourced this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are they, do they have an office in Gastonia?
They do not have an office in Gastonia, no, ma'am. It's, and none of, none of the three have an office in Gastonia, all of them are in the Charlotte Concord area, and mainly that's because of the chlorine supply, and that's where that railcar setup is for, for them to get their chlorine supply.
I can understand why this is a, would be a good thing for outsourcing, okay? Because when you, anybody that's kept up a swimming pool, even in a backyard, let alone a city facility, and you can do it a lot cheaper outsourcing it, then it would be foolish for us not to do something like that. So, I appreciate your attitude in going out and looking at the private sector and being able to say, can we do it better from the private sector? So, thank you.
Chuck, what other municipalities are using Carolina Pool Management right now that are in the area?
Cabarrus County, Rock Hill, Tiga Cay, or the municipalities, there are several country clubs. Gaston Country Club was one time, they've gone back to doing their, doing their own, but those, those are the references that we got, the ones that were comparable to what, to what we do.
So, what will be the, kind of the day-to-day interaction between them and Recreation Department staff?
Our swimming pools are under our athletic division, and I failed to mention that they, they actually want our, they want to employ the lifeguards that we used in the past. We have about 13 to 14 of them that we're planning on coming back. They want to definitely employ, employ them, and we'll use them, we'll use them there. I got off on that, Dr. Curling, and I'm sorry, ask me that question again.
Yeah, just basically, you know, who will be the point of contact and how frequent will the contact be between rec staff and the management company?
We will, we will look at everything about the pool. We're going to do an assessment, especially, you know, during this first year, we're going to do, it's going to be, you know, daily, daily checks to make sure that they're handling things in a proper way, that the lifeguards are looking at the water, that they're doing the things that we would normally do anyway. We're going, we're going to make sure that everything's clean, that we're, we're actually going to check the, the records, we're actually going to check the water ourselves. We're going to be contacting them on a daily basis because we'll have to have interaction when we have swim classes and, and setting those things up, our pool rentals and setting those things up as well. And we actually interacted with one of their, one of their folks, Jeff Gekel, on, almost in, at least a weekly basis, on the pool chemical side of things before. So, we, we really have a good relationship with them, and like I say, we will perform that assessment, and it will be a daily schedule of, of that interaction.
Chuck, just two questions. One, who's going to be collecting the money at the pools? Is it going to be the organization or is it going to be staff?
It will be staff members. The way we work the pool, and that's the position, the positions that will not be eliminated or will actually be referred to Carolina Pool Management, will be our, our pool attendants who are responsible for taking up the funds for the pool and for the train during, during the operational season. We will take up all, all the funds, and then we will actually make, I think it's 10 payments at, timely payments, it's in your packet-
Right.
-for the, to take care of the agreement.
The other question I have is, the swim lessons, are they going to be online at all? Would they be able to, would a parent be able to pull up online and schedule lessons themselves that way, or do they have to do it through the pool?
We are continuing to work through that. I know our IT department, Todd Carpenter, we had another demo the other day, and we're, we're really close to getting there. We're not, we're not there. All that will come through our office as we have been doing it, and we're really, we're really a whole lot closer than we were. We're not quite there, but we're making sure with the right company that everything, everything's going to work well before, so we can go online for not just, not just this, but we're without an administrative assistant now, and we're, we're working with office help. We've got one coming in, so we had one retire several months ago. So, it was my turn this morning to be there between eight and nine to really answer the phones, and I had 12, 12 calls in 30 minutes for, for shelter rentals, and I almost called Todd, but I didn't. I knew he had his budget review today to say, hey, look, we need to speed this up pretty quick because that's a lot of phone calls in, in that amount of time just for shelter rentals, and that'll be something that's going to be included in that package.
Excellent.
Y'all do take credit cards, don't you?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, so, as people are, if they're online, it can go ahead and pay online with a credit card?
That's the way, that's the way the setup is going to work, yes, ma'am.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion, since we're going to save $10,000 by going this way, and also lessen our liability by, and having them take a $20 million insurance policy, by all means, I make a motion that we approve the contract.
Discussion. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item five is the Facilities Management Committee meeting report, the presentation by Mayor Proten, Brenda Craig, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item five, exhibit-
The Facility Management Committee meeting met on Wednesday, March the 4th, and we had a lengthy agenda. It was a very interesting meeting and a very productive meeting, I feel like. We kind of, from the agenda, we kind of changed it some. We took item three and item four and went ahead and voted on that. So, if you would just go with your agenda, I mean, with your information, the summary in the, in the agenda packet, we, the committee did vote unanimously 2-0 to recommend approval of the sale of the property of 11126 Gaston Avenue, and a resolution authorizing upset bid process for the sale of the property pending verification of the property tax value. And that would be our recommendation from the committee.
Is there a motion?
I put that in the form of a motion.
That is your motion.
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion. Item three, 1126 Gaston Avenue. You all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, it was a similar situation, the committee voted unanimously 3 to 0. And let me explain that just a little bit. 2 to 0, Dr. Curling was just a little bit late, so we went ahead and moved the agenda along, but he came in very quickly after that. So, that's why you see 2-0 and 3-0. But the committee voted unanimously 3-0 to recommend approval of the sale of the property at 501 South Chestnut, and a resolution authorizing upset bid process for the sale of the property. I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous.
Item number one is the proposals for the Webb Theater Building. The committee, there were three proposals were submitted by the city, were received by the city for the possible sale or lease, to purchase the Webb Theater Building. And you can see the three proposals in your agenda. The committee had, there were, there were four original proposals, and one was withdrawn before the committee meeting. There were two proposals that the representatives were at the committee meeting, and we asked them to give a presentation to the committee of, you know, why they wanted to do what they wanted to do, either purchase the building or to lease to purchase the building. Both presentations, one was given by Epic Chop House, and the other was given by Homesteads, and both of them were very good presentations, and the three committee members at that time decided to, as opposed to make a recommendation of either or of the presentations, to recommend that they come to the council, so every council member would have an opportunity to ask any questions and to hear their presentations. So, at this time, with the approval of the mayor, I would ask that the presenters present their proposals to the council. They are here. Epic Chop House is here, and Homestead is here, and Mr.- Mr. Gus. Okay, it's the best I can do at this point. He was, he was not at the meeting, at our committee meeting. He has come tonight to listen and, and just see if there's anything that we would like to ask him or anything like that. But at this point, we have the two presenters from the committee meeting, and we will do that in alphabetical order. So, I would ask Epic Chop House if you would like to start your presentation.
I'd like to ask everyone, please, when they do come up, to give their name and their address for the record, for the clerk. Excuse me, go ahead.
Sure, Jim Russell with Epic Chop House, 104 South Main Street, Mooresville, North Carolina. Mayor, Council, thank you very, very much for hearing me and our presentation. Guys in the back, if we could hit the video, I certainly would appreciate it. We've got a little presentation for you about our two restaurants. Well, I can tell you it's a beautiful view of the restaurant, but there's some sound that's supposed to go along with that, along with that handsome guy who is just-
All of our steaks are aged a minimum of 30 days for tenderness. Our seafood can't be any fresher, and our lobster tails are outstanding. We also offer great sauces and outstanding ribs. Done in a traditional Chicago and New York style, we cook all of our steaks in the South Bend Boiler. Gives a nice crusty exterior with a moist tender inside. One of our house specials, please, is our tomahawk chop. 48 ounces, three pounds of meat on the bone, aged to tenderness, mouth-watering steak. From North Carolina, we offer mountain trout with Gulf shrimp wrapped with bacon, asparagus, and lobster for nes. One of our true surprises at the end of meal, try our epic cake. One look and you'll see why it's so special.
Wow.
Just like our food, we focus on quality with our beverage, too. We pour a generous two-ounce premium pour on all of our cocktails. We also pour a generous eight-ounce pour on all of our glasses of wine, and a true 16-ounce pint on all of our craft beers. One of the only restaurants in the area that have room for private dining, Epic Chop House is a great place to host your business meeting, your birthday party, or your rehearsal dinner. Located at 104 South Main Street, on the corner of Center and Main, Epic Chop House offers complimentary ballet, party, and great outdoor. We're open Sunday through Thursday from 4:00 to 10:00. Then on Friday and Saturday, we're open from 4:00 to 11:00. Reservations aren't required at Epic Chop House, but they are suggested.
Thank you very much. That is what we do. I want to tell you how we contribute and the other things that we do. As stated in our letter from, from Mayor Atkins at Mooresville, we've been a catalyst for downtown Mooresville to grow the center city of Mooresville. Since Epic opened, seven other restaurants have opened, two clothing stores, an olive oil store, which produces some great olive oil, a wine bar, and that's just and a half a mile. There's also plans in the next two years to build a three-story, $50,000 cornerstone in the restaurant that has been inspired from our restaurant, and also housing downtown. As I said in our last meeting, restaurants create ambiance, restaurants create gathering places, restaurants create a reason to go. I fell in love with that, that web building, and just could, you asked me before, Brenda, one word to describe it, and that's just the possibility of what could be down there. My partner has won two awards. He's, he's been an architect and engineer for 25 years. Rick Mack has won two awards for rehabilitating structures in Charlotte and also in the surrounding area. The Cornelius Fire Department was one of them, taking an older building and keeping it relevant to its time. We also look to be a partner with the town of Gastonia, should we be able to put Epic Chop House down here. One of the things that really makes me excited about here is this blank canvas that we have. But some of the things that the city of Gastonia will do with us is we will partner up with them to make downtown relevant. Car shows, art shows, we've got a beautiful art complex being built, diagonally right across from, what a way to celebrate that. Music events, and it's helped out to have the neighborhood rediscover their own city. We were able to do that in Mooresville, and we're doing that in Denver, too. We would like that opportunity to do that in Gastonia, too. I walk through these streets, and to tell you the truth, I can imagine monuments to the people who helped build this town, the textiles that helped build this town, and walking through the streets, interacting with a music shop, a coffee shop, a wonderful restaurant such as ours, it's a gathering place. And I also think it would be a great place for the future business of Gastonia to meet and greet and discuss business in. And that's one of the things that I think Epic Chop House has to offer Gastonia. We have a strong participation with our chamber. The tenants, the, the, the people who own the buildings in a town owe it to that town to help it prosper by utilizing other members of the chamber, utilizing as many local services as we can to keep our community strong. We tie it back in Mooresville, just to brag a little bit, because I'm very, very proud of it. of it, we tied back over $30,000 each year back to our community. Anywhere from the Serenity House, which is a home for, it's like a hospice for those who don't have a home, Dove House, which is a place to help children who have been abused, our local community health clinic, sometimes we all fall on bad health and need a helping hand, and also the Mooresville graded school system. We have an active part in making sure that our residents succeed, have kids have a chance for success in school. Education is a huge part in a town advancing. Arts, music, great dining always go together. And a business is more than just a revenue generator. We look, like I said before, we look forward to paying our taxes. I hope we pay a lot of taxes because that means that we will be a successful restaurant. But along with being a revenue generator, we are a part of the community to help it grow. And I think that's going to be one of the core things that we do. You know, it's funny hearing about LMA. I wasn't aware of that story. I was totally unaware of it and I felt, found myself getting pulled into it and pulled into it and wondering what would that statue look like? I don't know the whole story, but what would that statue look like? That would inspire me to start thinking about what part of Gastonia has contributed to the town. Who are the residents? Who are the people? What are the things that happened to the town? Webb theater is a big part of that since, I believe, 1926. How can we make Webb theater part of the relevant history of Gastonia as you walk through this town and you stop by, hopefully my restaurant? How can we promote that town gem as being part of the history? I know our offer is lower than our competitor, but I encourage you to think about the dollars that we will be investing back into the restaurant. I will commit to $300,000 investment back into the building. That will certainly raise the tax base of the building. I know that Gastonia is not in the landlord business, but I want to encourage you to take that into consideration. The added tax base, the sales and the revenue that we will be generating through our sales tax, and also the jobs that will be offered to our employees in the area. We tend to hire directly from the community. Over 75% of our jobs in Mooresville are, in Mooresville residents within a five-mile radius, 85% in Denver in our Chillfire radius. So you can see us building and building and building, utilizing local businesses, utilizing the labor base here, training, training and training to get better and better and better production out of our staff and our team and make it a cornerstone, a true gem in the crown of Gastonia. You said possibility. That's all I think every time I drive up these streets. What are the possibilities going to be? And I tell you, I will work my hardest to make sure that I will realize those possibilities in this town. I look forward to the opportunity. I know I haven't taken up my 10 minutes, but I think you've got an essence of what I'm about, what my business is about, and what my commitment's about. My partner over here, John Spencer, is a ex-head of the Culinary Federation in Charlotte. We are committed to, as much as music and art is a part of a community, culinary dining is a part of a community, too. And the training of that labor base is so important. I just look forward to competition. I look forward to other restaurants coming to the area. I look forward to other shops. I look forward to having a hard time finding a parking spot. I can't wait till that day would happen. And that's all I have to say about our opportunities here. I'm looking forward to it. I hope we get the opportunity to do it. I welcome the faces that I see here who have been to my restaurants and all I can say is we'd love the opportunity to do that here in downtown Gastonia.
Any questions?
Yeah. If anybody, if that is okay with the mayor, then if anybody has any questions, then now would be a good time to ask those.
Yes, sir.
Jim, in terms of the Epic Chop House, you took that facility, let's see, and by the history that I'm reading here, invested about $450,000 into it. And it was also a restaurant prior to that.
It was.
Right? So now I remember seeing somewhere in here, and I can't find it right now, but you generated, what, like $4.5 million in sales?
We're currently at $4.5 million in sales. We started off at 2.5 in our first year. And our commitment to our community is what grew it. It's a word of mouth. We market, yes, but it's the word of mouth that helps us to grow it up to $4.5 million in sales.
So that being said, and I think the restaurant there in Mooresville seats about 300?
250, 300, yeah.
And what would you estimate to be the number that the Webb could seat and what kind of revenues would you estimate to generate within the first? I'm not putting, you know, you on the spot, but you've got to have some ideas of what you're thinking you can start with and move to.
I am a planner and I tell you what, this building has kept me up at night, gladly kept me up at night, thinking about what the possibilities are. We think we're going to be probably able to do between 150 to 175 in the building space. We have plans to, as my architect partner, Rick Mack, and I came through, we had plans to better utilize the seating area, change the interior to enhance the charm of that building, and the patio area we're going to redo to hopefully get larger parties and seats up there rather than the two-top here, the two-top there, and the private dining room. So I think in our first year, conservatively, we thought $1.5 million to $2 million because we plan on opening up for both lunch and for dinner. We take things slow and we do things right. I let my mind get away from me because I'm never happy. Two million, then I want two and a half, then I want three, then I want four, and then I, it's just the way I work. It's my makeup. But we think conservatively, we can do one and a half to two in our first year.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
First, thanks for coming back and doing the proposal and certainly for the video. You answered one of my questions earlier in an email exchange with Ash and then just again, you did say you were going to do lunch, which I think was very important. Obviously, we can't dictate what you do after you buy the property, but we were all hoping that it would be a proprietor that did lunch. But that's not something you do at your other locations, is it?
Actually, Chillfire opens up for lunch the first of next month. It's part of our business plan. We concentrate on executing well and then growing from there. Epic doesn't lend itself in downtown Mooresville. There's a lot of other alternatives down there for people to have a bite to eat for lunch, and that wasn't part of our business plan. For here, it would definitely become an instrumental part of our plan to open up for lunches.
And you have Epic in Mooresville, you have Chillfire in Denver. So the Webb Theater here, are you planning to name that Epic as well?
We'd like to go along those lines, just because I think Epic is a pretty cool name. It kind of, if you look at that movie theater, Rick and I were looking at it, can you imagine Epic, the big movie sign? Movie theaters were called Epic. It may be something along those lines. The name is, does have a following, but I really think it's the way we run the business that creates that following. So should we change it to Epic or something else? I think we'd still be able to draw on that.
Yeah, I would, if you're not already set on it and your plan for the building is in our emotion, you know, for Epic, I would encourage you to name it something more local to Gastonia.
Be welcome. Welcome to hear some ideas about that, Todd, absolutely.
Because Epic says Mooresville, you know, so we're like, we're not Mooresville, so maybe, but. And then we have three different proposals that we could consider if we were to accept your offer. And on all three of these proposals, are you prepared and ready at this time? You have the money in place for the deposit that would be necessary?
Yes, without a doubt.
Thank you very much.
Jim, let me ask you one question that I forgot to ask at the committee meeting. What percentage of your customers in Mooresville are from Mooresville? Are they mostly local or do they come from wherever?
Brenda, I don't have the science to tell me that. I just know because I do table visit, Dave could tell you, came in for dinner on Saturday. I stop by each table. We pull from a pretty big radius. We pull from Statesville, Hickory, all the way down to Waxaw, which I'm grateful for somebody driving 45 minutes for dinner. But Mooresville's only a population of 30,000 people. I think we have the ability to pull from all over, as does Chillfire. Chillfire pulls from Gastonia also. I think people will travel for a great meal and a good time.
What do you think the per capita income is in the Mooresville area?
Yeah, 55,000 or so. There's a trend, Brenda, in dining. There are less people going out to eat, believe it or not, if you look at the industry standard. What people are choosing to do is to choose a good meal when they go out to eat. It would be a good, it needs to be a good value and a good meal. You can fill your gullet up at any place and there are people who do that, but most people are saying, you know what, we're going out, it's my budget for this month, we're going to go someplace and have an outstanding meal. And that's why I think we've done a great job with Chillfire and with Epic because we offer an incredible value. I don't think anybody ever walks away hungry, at least not for the next three or four days after they're done eating it. But it's a dining experience and we, our business model, I don't have a corporate office, I'm not opening up 16 restaurants in two years. I don't, I do my accounting, I do my bookkeeping, I have a person who works with me on that, but I don't have a high overhead. So I'm able to put that into the quality of our food and the quality of our dining experience.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I looked through your menu.
Which one do you want? Do you want the Porter House? Just saying.
Epic Chop House menu. I read the whole, just about everything that you had in there and it's pretty expensive.
You know what? If it was just Epic Chop House, it is, it could be considered pretty expensive. It's still a good value. I would encourage you to look at the merger of both Chillfire and Epic. Each market is different. You can't cookie cutter anything out in any place. It will, it'll form to its surroundings. If you look on that menu, though, you'll find a dish on there for $12. You'll also find, if you want to go out and spend $45 for that bone-in rub eye, you can do that, too. You could find just about anything on our menu. I encourage you to look a little bit broader. I think you'd find those price ranges in there, from chicken to seafood to shrimp and grits. You could, for an individual person wanting to, they could get in for, and have an enjoyable dinner for $15.
Well, I would certainly want you to be very, very successful and I would plan to come meet with you if you're, you know, if you get to vote for the council. But I also noticed, one of the first things on your menu, Mr. Chef John, you had crab cakes. One of my favorite things. You go to Washington in that area and they like 90% crab with very little filler. Is that your type of crab cake?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I grew up on the coast of North Carolina.
Yeah, John, coming up.
Crab cakes are one of my favorite things to do. And we've probably got, I spent a little time in Frederick, Maryland also, and just, you know, west of Chesapeake and we were, you know, we did really good crab cakes, but yeah, I'd like to think I've got about 85 to 92% pure crab. I don't do, I don't do the bread fillers and I don't do any liquid fillers. It's just bound together real gently. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, and some of these hotels, like the Rick Scarlett and some of them, cook them in the gourmet, cook them and it's delicious. My wife gets those, she goes to Washington several times a year and eats. She's probably listening to this laughing right now. She gets crab cakes and she'll take a bite for me and think about me.
Well, she won't have to travel so far.
Right, won't have to go very far.
Yeah, and your steak, some of the steaks I got next door over here were burned. You have a, I hope you have a better way to cook a steak. I don't know if they did, there were a lot of frying pans over there when I threw there. I wonder if they cooked, I noticed in your video that you had a special oven to cook the steak.
We do, we use, we use South Bend broilers and they are very, very hot. They're designed, you know, they're New York and Chicago styled, they, you know, they do, you can cook a steak in a hurry and they do provide an ample amount of char, but we're very good at customizing that so we don't have the char for the people who don't want the char, we do have it for the people who do want it. So we can do either and that's, that's kind of, I think, what makes us unique. We do, we cater to where we are and what we're, and what we're serving. But yeah, we're going to, we're going to provide you a quality meal every time.
I think you have a lot of good business.
We also train Porter. We do a lot of training, too, in developing of our team. We never rest on training, training, training. We constantly hone our skills.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reed, anything else? Roll around here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next presenter is Homestead out of Lincolnon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to come in tonight and do a presentation for the Webb Theater. My name is Byron Sackett. I live at 4942 Shady Meadow Lane, Denver, North Carolina. Just a little bit of history about the name before we get into the concept. Homestead, and you see the hurricane on the package, Homestead was hit by Hurricane during August 26, 1992. My family left the Gaston County area in the mid-1930s and pioneered South Florida. My grandfather helped build the overseas highway through the Florida Keys. And the Bowieville infestation, talking about all the textile industries around, the Bowieville infestation in the mid-1930s was the worst this region had ever seen. And so the farmers had to go somewhere warm to farm and many farmers from Lincoln, Gaston, and Cleveland County area actually pioneered Homestead, Florida. There's a lot of images that are out there that have, in restaurants where you'll see 40 to 50 people from the Gaston, Lincoln County area at one time or another, in the same photo in Homestead. Because once one or two of the guys went down, they saw that there was a livelihood for them to farm during the wintertime, so they went down. And even though the farming seasons here were getting better throughout the mid to late 30s, they still needed to subsidize their income, so they went south for the winters to farm. Carolina freight, interesting fact, Carolina freight, one of the things they started hauling was produce from Homestead, Florida to the Columbia's Farmers Market. Greer Bean was hauling furniture and supplies from the Carolinas South, but needed to backhaul to be successful. And one of the things that they used was backhauling produce from South Florida. So there's a great story that was done in the Gaston Gazette many years ago called "The Woodpecker Trail." And there was no roads through South Florida, they actually just made notches on the trees and that's how they found out where they were going. They would, they would tell the other guys, go to two and a half miles, you see a notch on a tree, turn left. So I, you know, talking about the history of Gaston County, I encourage you to go back and read about the Woodpecker Trail and how the tie to Gaston County and Homestead, Florida. So we always had a summer home here and everybody knew Homestead. And the first few months we were open, we actually had a book in the restaurant. If you had ever lived in Homestead or been in Homestead or had relatives, please sign the book. We had over 300 people in the first 30 days sign the book that had lived there. My mother-in-law graduated from high school down there. She moved up here from Atlanta about two and a half years ago. My wife and I had the privilege of having twins two years ago, so besides the restaurant, we have twins, been quite busy. So we brought my mother-in-law and my mother-in-law knows more people in the grocery stores locally than my wife does because my wife works in South Park, but my mother, being from Homestead, a lot of her classmates were actually from this area and so have come back to this area. So that's why we went with the name Homestead because a lot of people in the area were familiar with it and it was a name of comfort and recognition and brought back a lot of history to the community. So just going through our proposal, we've made offers for purchase and an offer to lease. We plan on creating 17 to 25 full-time jobs. We've been open in Lincolnon, I'll just give you a history of our restaurant in Lincolnon. We'll be open two years tomorrow. Tomorrow will be our second anniversary. So we're very proud that, you know, the success rates of restaurants, once you make it past two years, is very high. The failure rate in the first year is very high. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people out there that are good cooks or people that are business people that don't understand both aspects of the business that give this trade a bad reputation, unfortunately. There's a lot of fine people like Jim and myself that are dedicated to serving people every day that are very successful. And if you take that top 10%, 15% of people that are entrepreneurs and believe in what they do 100%, you'll see that that success rate is probably higher than the average business industry other than the restaurant industry. So again, putting the restaurant industry as a whole is really, truly not fair because they have a lot of people that unfortunately lose a lot of retirement funds opening restaurants. I've got, someone that came to me the other day, asked me if I could help them with their restaurant. They stuck their entire life savings in it. I said, best thing to do is get out quick because it is a tough business and you spend a lot of hours there. We opened two years ago. Prior to that, I was the operating partner with Fats Cafe. I brought Fats to Lincolnon. I lived in Sheriville and felt like we had to drive to Hickory, Charlotte, Gaston to have a good meal. So up and decided I was going to get into the restaurant industry. I was a businessperson. I knew the business side, did not know the cooking side, did not know that side of the business. But at the end of the day, I knew that no matter what you did, it was all about customer service. Didn't matter what you were selling or what you were delivering, the level of how you were graded was based on customer service. So brought Fats Cafe to Lincolnon in 2004, actually 2003, purchased the land. And a lot of people told me I was crazy, that what are you doing bringing a restaurant to Lincolnon? It'll never work. Nobody had ever gone out that far and done anything like that. Once we opened, we were truly successful. We set company records... We set company records in Linkington and there was already at that time 18 other locations and we were very successful there, good community stewards. Once we developed that piece of land, there, the restaurant, shall we say, the restaurant purge began. People started coming to Lincoln and opening restaurants, you know, whether they be fast food or fast casual dining. Again, Lincoln is a town, sitting inside the city limits of 8,000 to 10,000 people. We were very successful with what we did. We brought people from different communities to come in because they heard of what we did, of our reputation. So in 2009, the company, the majority owner made the decision to sell to a group of financial investors in Philadelphia. They were a small cap firm that had the vision of taking the company to a mid-cap. They had no restaurant experience, did not do a lot of research and I felt like it was time for me to leave at that time and I did. A lot of changes happened at that time. Upon leaving, I knew that I had to stay in the food business somehow, even though I had not been in it very long. I, I knew that it was in my blood and that I was called to serve people and to, to be part of the food industry. I became child nutrition director for Lincoln County Schools because I had a non-compete clause with Fats Cafe and Cafe Enterprises. Even though my lawyers advised me it was not, would not hold up in North Carolina court, I was a man of my word. I looked him on the eye, signed the dotted line, said I would not open a restaurant. So I, I made the decision to find other employment. So I went to work for the school system. I was there for four years and took a deficit of several hundred thousand into a multimillion dollar surplus and increased participation in Lincoln County Schools and received national acclaim for myself and the program and still to this day do some consulting to help school districts that are losing money to put, to make them more financially solvent because it is a big burden on the school systems, the financial responsibility feeding the children. During that time, we, we, going into the school system, one of the two reasons that people don't go into restaurants is, there's two reasons you don't go back, service or food. People will go back 67% of the time if food is bad, they'll give you a second try. If the service is bad, less than 25% will they return. And so we took that philosophy and put it into the school system just to show how simple the industry truly is and how every concept is truly the same whether you're eating in my establishment or their establishment. It's all about that service. So we made sure that we've, we fine-tuned the service there and we've taken those things that we learned and we brought them into Homestead's Grill and Tap House. We are a large facility. We purchased the Ryan's Steakhouse in Linkington and we sunk a little over a million dollars into the renovation. We spent a majority of it on the inside and on kitchen equipment. We have a full-service bar and we seat about 368. The main dining room seats about 180. The entire restaurant seats 368 with our two banquet facility rooms that we have in, in the back and those are used quite frequently, anywhere from an average of five to 12 times a week, just depending on the time of year. Summertime it gets a little bit slower, but we hold monthly meetings there for the real estate board. Different political affiliations have their monthly meetings there. So we've become the go-to place in Linkington and Lincoln County for that type of meeting. You can look for the letter references from the Chamber of Commerce. We encourage all of our management team to volunteer their time throughout the year. They're paid to do that. I've served on the education committee for the Chamber for many years, served on the United Way Board for two terms for Lincoln County, I believe, and giving back to the community by, which is evident by our success because can't be successful in a restaurant of our size within a town of 8,000 people unless you're drawing people from other areas and people feel like you're giving back and they come to be a part of what you're doing. You know, when I was with Fats, if there was an event in town, people would call and they would say, hey, can you help us out? And it wasn't what do you want, it was how much do you want? And we would take care of them. We've instilled that same philosophy in our management team and my wife and I are sole owners of the company and we continue that tradition with Homestead's Grill and Tap House to this day. Again, we are a little bit different concept than, than the previous presenter. Our average check price point is 15 to $18. We do serve lunch. We are kind of the go-to place in Linkington for lunch to go if you're a business lunch in. We have lunches that start from $6.99 to $8.99. That's kind of our mainstream. We averaged, last calendar year, we averaged a little over 2,000 people a week through the restaurant and we feel like that's the type of traffic we could generate here in downtown Gastonia. We have multiple people that we're already doing business with in this community. Matter of fact, we had a meeting today right before I came with a, a local manufacturer industry here in town to cater an event on May 30th for 1,000 people. They came to us because of our reputation of what we've done for another manufacturer here in Gastonia that were recommended through an HR association meeting. So we have a presence already in Gastonia. We are going to keep the name the same. We are trying to build a brand and again, every brand, every time we open another Homestead's Grill and Tap House, that is my reputation, my name on the door and that's what I live and sleep and eat. My wife is a financial planner currently with TIA-CREF. Once the company grows, we foresee her coming on aboard full-time as the CFO of the company with her financial background and degree. We also are going to bring on, if we do the Gastonia location, Director of Operations, his name is David Beaver. He most recently is currently manager for a restaurant in South Carolina, was previously with 131 Main in Huntersville, owns a house here in Gastonia, so will be moving back to Gastonia. He's currently renting that house out because he, he works in the upstate part of South Carolina for work reasons, the restaurant business, you don't get out till 2 o'clock some mornings. He, he made that decision to, to move there, but we'll be moving back. Our general manager will be Zane Ridings. Zane is a graduate of Johnson and Wales University. He has a culinary degree. He actually worked for me in 2007, straight out of Johnson and Wales. We recruited him. We work with the recruiting and the job placement group at Johnson and Wales because we felt that was important to recruit and employ local people. Zane was actually a resident of Gaston County at the time, now lives in Lincoln County and he would be our general manager at the web theater location. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of those at this time.
Any questions? Dr. Curly?
Yeah, Byron, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Jim and that was with regard to, you know, what you would expect to see, the seating capacity of the restaurant and then based upon the, the type of operation that you would run, what would you think would be general sales within the first year or two?
Sure, Dr. Curly, I appreciate that question. I would say one thing we are not going to do, we are not going to go in and make a huge change. Everyone we talked to about this web theater location that was there under the previous owners had an opportunity to look at the photographs and the images on the website is blown away by the remodel that was there and the integrity of the building, how it was brought forth and brought back some of the time, history and the period of, of the 1920s. So we will not go in and make a major renovation. So the seating capacity, we, we estimated about 140 to 150. We do think that we can still do about $1.5 million our first year. Again, restaurants, like Jim talked about, we, we don't hope to open so big, you hope to grow your sales. You know, we, we love the big, heavy openings. We opened up three times what our projected sales were, opening week in Linkington. That makes it a little hard to operate, no matter how prepared you are because you're, you're in a new facility, a new existing location. The difference in Linkington and here, we now have tenured folks. Our thought process, if we do get this location, is that we will bring staff aboard immediately and we will train them at our Linkington location. We will bring in anywhere from 15 to 25 key members of the team that we will employ effective immediately once we, we do move forward with the plans. As we get closer to the opening date of the Gastonia location, our Lincoln team would step back and the operation in Lincoln would be totally ran and operated by the Gastonia team. So when we come down here, day one is not day one, it's day 61. And so there, they would be just, it'd be just like you go into the Lincoln location today, the service and level of food provided would be the same, so there'd be no lapse in service.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask you the same question as I asked Jim too. What percentage of your clients or customers are from Lincoln, Linkington?
Well, we're a little bit different. We've got 8,000 people and if I'm getting 2,000 people a week, we're getting 25% of Lincoln. What I will say is we do have a draw from, I would say Cheriville, Dallas, High Shoals area, Maiden, Newton. We pull a lot from the Hickory area, the South Hickory area because rather than have a two-hour wait in Hickory, they can get twice the meal, twice the service and not have to wait. And one of the features that we use in the restaurant that I know Ash, Mr. Smith saw in the restaurant was our iPad and we use iPads at the table. The servers actually take the entire order. It's just like it would be a sale, point-of-sale computer system. One of his complaints said if there was any complaint, the food actually comes out too quick because we understand at lunch, we have done lunch and I've been involved in a restaurant that's done lunch for 10 to 12 years, you have about an hour average for lunch. But what people don't take into consideration is you've got an hour, there's a meaning to be in a restaurant for an hour. You've got 10 minutes to get to your car, to drive to the location you're going to eat. You've got 10 minutes to get back in your car and drive to the location, you're going back to work. So you've truly got 40 minutes. So by taking orders and then going to another POS, you're taking anywhere from five to 12 minutes depending on how many people in front of you at the, at the certain POS. And as everybody knows, lunch restaurants fill up pretty quick. It's not here and there, it's everybody comes in between 12 and 12:45. And so by doing that, when the server's at the table taking your order, as soon as she walks away, your order's instantly in and the food is being prepared. So it expedites the level of service. I didn't mean to get away from your question about the draw. We see our draws being here. We think that our brand recognition, we are being, we actually have a reputation now as Homestead's Grill and Tap House, when the folks from Lincoln can come down to shop in the Gastonia area, which a majority of them do based upon the sheer availability of what's retail options in Linkington that they would stop in and have dinner with us. If you were to look at some of the comments that were made on the website of the previous establishment that was there and some of the media stories that were on it, one of the things was, we love the food, but it wasn't affordable for us to go more than once a month. We want something that's affordable for the family where we can go. We have guests that come in our restaurant three to four to five nights a week and eat in our restaurant. Not only they, can they afford it, but they eat different variety every single night of the week. So by looking at that, that's what interested me in this location because I feel like there was a need, if you look at the feedback, people were saying, this is what we want. Well, that is who we are and I think that we're a good match for the theater and for downtown Gastonia.
What are your hours of operations?
We are open 11 to 10, Monday through Thursday, 11 to 11 Friday and Saturday and 11 to 9 on Sunday. And Sunday lunch is one of our, our biggest days. We do a nice southern home-style traditional special. We do specials every night of the week and that's, we, we got, we change based on what our customers want. Our customers ask us for something, we, we conform ourselves and we make those specials based on what our, our customers ask us to do because at the end of the day, without the customers, we will not be successful and we truly understand that.
May I ask you, sir, the hypothetical?
Sure.
If you, you had your restaurant here, I want to say across the street, but we're not in City Hall. If you had a restaurant here and you've named the, the Director of Operations and also the General Manager, would you be here?
I will be between the two locations, yes, sir.
Are you, do you have a General Manager and a Director of Operations in Lincoln?
I have a General Manager, I do. Director of Operations would be over both facilities as well as myself, so one of the two of us would be at either location. That was the, the thought process behind hiring a Director of Operations.
And that pad that you're talking about where it goes immediately into the kitchen, I've seen that, it's, it's all the time?
It is, yes, sir.
Do you have problems sometimes with people on a, a schedule? Because you, you pretty well summarized it there, but I mean, do they, do they have to be, do they get tired of waiting or does, is it come out too fast, like you said?
No, I mean, it, it actually, again, we've, we've worked with it. I mean, it's, it's, again, would you rather wait 45 minutes for your meal or get your meal in 10 to 12 minutes? What, ideally appetizers in four to six minutes is what we shoot for and we hit that probably 98% of the time. Obviously on Friday and Saturday nights when it gets backed up, we're probably in more of the four to eight minute range and we track all this. We do have tracking systems that monitor that. Our entrees, we try to hit in 10 to 14 minutes after the entree hits the table and we run at about a 95% success rate on that. The variance in why you're a little bit lower at the entree versus the appetizers, you get a lot of well-done steaks in this area. So without burning a steak on the outside to get it well-done in the middle, it's got to be cooked properly at the right temperature and so therefore causing some delays in that time, average check time.
That's your steak. Yes, sir.
Just one question, sir.
Sure.
When on your website, I saw the specials you have. You have like what, Kids Eat Free or something on Mondays?
Correct.
And Thursdays, oh, you can eat chicken wings and you were saying family style on Sunday or so, so you have something for every night of the week or so?
We do, we do. We have specials that we offer every single night of the week. Our, our signature item by default has become our baby back ribs. We, we didn't expect that to be such a hit, but we came up with this incredible recipe and we sell anywhere between 1,000 to 2,000 pounds of ribs a week and that is phenomenal for what we do. And that is one thing that we base a lot of our specials around. You know, obviously in the restaurant business, you're strategic based on food cost and customer acceptability when you do the specials, but yeah, we do try to be a part of the community. The Kids Eat Free is a very important thing for us. We also do Kids Eat Free every day that there's a snow day in the school system because you know, parents got to do something with the kids and it's been very successful for us. You know, a lot of people say, well, that's a gimmick to get people in the door. I don't think it is at all. I think it's a way to take, give back to the community.
May I? Dr. Curly?
Byron, when, when we met in committee, you, you mentioned some of your future plans with regard to opening additional restaurants. What, what were you?
Correct.
Alluding to at that time when you?
Yeah, our, our goal is to open two restaurants a year and there's no secrets about that. Again, we, we have goals to make this a regional-based restaurant over the next five to 10 years. Again, we will, we will move forward with two this year. We do expect to have two locations additional added on this year. But again, we will be based on our, we will base our growth on the sustainability of the locations that we open. We will not go to open another location unless we are comfortable with the current status in the staffing and we feel that we're taken care of. As soon as we see some fall back in one of those locations, we'll pull back our plans based on that.
And one other question is, you know...
I did not do that.
It'll come back.
Motion sensor, huh?
If you had...
Sorry about that.
This may not be a, a good question or a fair question, but if you had to kind of try to, say you were emulating a particular type of restaurant or, you know, for those that have never eaten at your restaurant, you know, if you wanted to give them some kind of a, a comparison to another product out there?
Wow.
Is there, is there, is there anything out there that you would say, oh, we're close to and we're better than or we're kind of like this or we want to be more like this or, you know, I, I don't know if that's a fair question.
What I will tell you, menu-wise, as far as menu selection, I won't say quality-wise because I, I think that our food speaks for itself. I think we have the best ribs anywhere, I'll put that. I, I bring that disclaimer to the table every time. Best ribs are anywhere in the world. I've traveled a lot of places and I can say that. I've only had one person out of probably three or 4,000 last couple of years tell me that was wrong and then they told me the name of the restaurant and said they're $42 a rack. I said, well, that's a little bit different now. But I would say we're across menu-wise between an Outback and a Firebirds. So, you know, we've got everything from fish, seafood, fresh salmon to a nine-ounce center cup filet. We have sirloins on the menu. So, you know, menu-wise, we're, we're in that area. Again, we do everything from scratch. Our soups, our pasta bases and everything are from scratch, cut fresh every day and made every day. So really don't like comparing yourself to other restaurants out there, but I, as far as menu selection-wise, I think that's what, kind of what you're getting at. as menu selection-wise, I think that's what, kind of what you're getting at. I would say that's where we fit in. And if you look at that type of restaurant, the first thing that people say is, there's a lot of those restaurants like that in Gastonia. There is, and how many hours do you have to wait on Friday and Saturday night? So that's one of the reasons I think that we're a perfect fit for this area.
Having said that, that's a perfect lead-in to what I was going to ask you. Thank you. The, it's almost rehearsed. A loaded question. Those people have to wait and wait on Saturday, Friday and Saturday night. And that's, I guess that's?
Part of life.
Hey, that's good unless it's us waiting.
Right.
Is, could you tell me, is it your personal opinion that there could be two restaurants? We've heard, and I'll ask both of you, could it support two restaurants in growing downtown Gastonia?
Oh, most definitely. I think it could support more, and like he spoke about earlier, I embrace other restaurants because, you know, one issue that we have in Lincoln is when people out there, they go, well, let's go to Hickory, let's go to Gastonia, we'll decide where we're going to go when we get there. So we lose out on that availability in Lincoln. I think you go to a downtown district, you have a restaurant like Epic and a restaurant like mine, and the sports bar that's down the road, and you've got several other restaurants, and even restaurants that are comparable to mine into theirs, people will go downtown and decide maybe when they get there where they're going to go. So again, I don't really look as fellow restaurants as our competition, more as our business partners to help drive the people to downtown, and I think that's what you have to do. When you get out on an isolated island, if one person was on an island, they're not going to send out a big search team, but if you've got a 747 that went down in the ocean with 300 people on it, you saw what happened, they're going to send everybody and their brother out. So, you know, again, the more people, the more draw you have to an area, the more people are going to come. So I think, I embrace that. And I do think, do I think it could support two? I think downtown Gastonia could support pretty much every building that's down there. If you just look at the, again, look at the national chains that you have placed around the community and the two to three-hour waits, a lot of that now, I will say, is probably mismanagement. I mean, they're managed at a corporate level, probably a little bit different than we manage it, or a little more hands-on. So, but again, I do think there's plenty of, plenty of opportunity here. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of questions as well. The, it's fair to say that your restaurant style is more of a casual?
Correct.
Restaurant. In Lincoln, you said you helped bring Fats, which was one of the first?
Correct.
More or less casual restaurants, sit-down dining type style. They've added a couple of restaurants, but you guys, when I say you guys, Homesteads and Fats, pretty much have the market cornered in Lincoln. You don't have competition there. Here in Gastonia, you are going to be slammed with casual-style competition. One of your former employers, Fats, started the Tavern?
Correct.
24 franchise, which is new. We have the, I mean, Chili's, you go on it. And I know you're proud of your food, and I've eaten in your restaurant, so I can say it. It was a good experience and it was good food. But you are really facing a lot of competition. Do you think that it's reasonable to expect that you will make your goals that you were stating earlier in your first year?
Yes, yes. One thing I will say is, you know, being an entrepreneur, you have to be a realist, but you have to also strive to make those goals work. You know, if I came in here and told you I was going to do $3 million a year, that would be ludicrous. But I do believe that the numbers that I put out are definitely achievable. Again, we have, we're a known commodity among some of the manufacturers here in town. We fed, you know, 600 to 1,000 people to time our food. They travel on weekends to come up and get our food now to Lincoln, to the folks that have had it in the industries in this community. Again, talking about the marketing, you know, one thing about marketing that we've done, we have, I've never paid for a newspaper ad, I've never paid for a radio spot, I've never paid for a TV commercial. Rather than to put the money in print or on the radio, we give our food to nonprofits and organizations because the food is our best testimonial, and that's how we would do it here in Gastonia, get involved in the community, get involved with the churches, give our ribs to different groups, give our steaks and our pastas to different people, and that would drive our sales. Again, in the restaurant business, you have to understand who your competition is, but at the end, you don't worry about what they're doing, you worry about what you're doing within your side of your four walls, and if you know you're doing it right, you'll be successful. So many restaurants fail because they worry about what their competitors are doing, trying to keep up with them, and that's a sign of a bad restaurant, and that's the reason that most restaurants fail. Am I truly, do I believe in what I'm doing? I 110% believe that we will be very successful in Gastonia, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good enough?
Yeah, if nobody else, because I actually have three questions. That was the first of three. The second one is, and I've been struggling how to phrase this because I do not want it to sound insulting at all, because that's not where this comes from, but do you think that, having eaten in your restaurant, do you think that your concept and your style of restaurant may be too casual for the web theater building? I mean, that's a very ornate, elaborate building. Do you not feel like it's a misfit for that building?
No, what I do feel is, you know, something I talked about in the council, the committee meeting, I have not talked here, you know, our goal is to deliver 25 to $35 meal experience for 15 to 20. So by taking our food and our service and putting in that location, we will not only give, deliver the food and the service, but now we have the atmosphere of a $35 plate restaurant, but at the same time delivering it for 15 to 20. So I think it's an additive, an additive to our concept rather than a detraction.
Okay. And then you have several proposals that we could consider as well, just like the other restaurant did, and I'll ask you the same question because the first option that we have is an outright purchase, which we've made it no secret, I don't think any one of the councils made it a secret that we want this building purchased, and it's for a large sum of money, and are you prepared? You have that?
Yes.
On hand, you're ready to write the check?
Yeah, well, we have secured financing for the property through a local financial establishment in Lincoln. And we will not have any partners. It will be myself and my wife retain 100% ownership.
You didn't have one? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Very, very much.
Wait a minute, I want to ask you a question.
One minute.
One question.
It's okay.
You said you had a nine-ounce, nine-ounce filet.
Yes.
Well, he has an eight-ounce or a 12-ounce. How much is your nine-ounce filet?
$22.99.
You get more, you get more for less than that?
I'll let you be the decider on that. Again, you know, in fairness, I mean, the quality of food that they do is different. I mean, they're after a specific market. We have a broad line of appeal, and that's why I think we'll be successful.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to me?
Yes, ma'am. Sure is.
As you can see, the committee felt like that it was the only fair thing to do, to bring both of these quality proposals to the full council. So everyone would have the opportunity to hear what these presenters have to say, these owners, and you had the opportunity to ask any questions. So it, you know, this is a great situation to have because we've got two quality restaurants. And I will just have to say, whichever restaurant doesn't get the web theater, I certainly hope that we will ultimately end up with both of you. Okay, some way, somehow. Okay? Because I think Gastonia is, and like I think both of you have stated, we need these restaurants. We need the quality that they bring. So with that, you know, I guess, if there's a motion or other questions?
I'd like to ask something first before you make the motion, and it's probably not going to gain any acceptance. I mentioned to you earlier, Todd, it'd be nice to be able to get the Gazette to make a real detailed story about these two restaurants, show their menus, describe the food that they have and the pricing and all that, and then get the Gazette to do a poll and let the people in the community help decide which restaurant, to advise us as to which restaurant to pick. I'd love to do that and let the community be involved in it. And put it all to the next meeting, that's three weeks from tonight.
I think your ideas are wonderful, Porter, except I don't put any stake in the Gazette polls. They are so unscientific, scientific. And one person can go on there and vote, 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 and then you have one person deciding what restaurant.
I didn't think that you could vote but once.
Yeah, you do a different IP address, if you've got a phone, a laptop, a desktop, and an iPad, that's four, but, yeah, that's my only thing on that. They're so unscientific. But I was going to ask Chairperson Craig and Mayor Bridgman if you would mind giving me a little leeway on a question. You brought up a good point, and I don't know if either of you gentlemen want to answer. If your bid is not selected, will you be looking for another location in Gastonia?
Is that rhetorical or?
No, that's, I'm asking the question, will you look for another? If we do not choose you tonight, if we, and you don't win the bid, granted, this is an upset bid process, so regardless of who we choose, neither one of you could end up getting it, a third party could come in and bid. But if you are not the winning bid, will you start looking for another location in Gastonia, or are you kind of done?
Here's the thing that excited me about.
Excuse me, you have to please up to the mic. Hold on.
We're not plug-and-play. We look for an architectural accent to add to the dining experience. My protege said that feeding, feeding the food, they'll come from my food, they'll come from my food, they'll come to my restaurant for an experience, and that doesn't always lend itself to every particular building. Are there buildings that I see in Gastonia that make me drool? Absolutely. I mean, I walked through this town probably six hours in the cold trying to figure, oh, that would be a cool place, that would be a cool place. But there's not a lot, I see the opportunity here. I see the possibility here. I could hug that building and feel what it was, the people going through it, the movie projector, the excitement of the, and I would like to change it because I think it could even celebrate that even more, that beautiful web theater. It would have to be a very, very special building for me to do that. Could I open up a restaurant in Gastonia? I'd love to open up a restaurant in Gastonia, but it's got to be the right piece of work, the right clay. It doesn't always work with every single building. It's got a charm. I mean, look at that building, it's just got a charm to it.
Thank you. I appreciate your honesty on that.
Mr. Say.
The answer to that is yes. We've been looking in Gaston, Gastonia, Gaston County for about the last eight to 12 months. We have a real estate company that's strategically targeting the Charlotte metro area and the outlying communities that we feel are underserved, that still have opportunity for growth in the restaurant industry, and that are missing that larger privately-owned, locally-owned and operated restaurant. So yes, the answer is we have been looking at Gastonia, and we would continue to look at Gastonia, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to entertain a motion. I would like to entertain a motion. Gentlemen, both of you guys, great entrepreneurs, successful businesses, love both places. You really, you know, hit it out of the park. Thank you for your presentations and all, really, really nice. The one thing the city does well is fire, police, roads, water. We're just not in the business for leasing, and that's the one sticking point on this. And the reason I'm making a motion is because I want to get out of the leasing business and sell the building. And there is the upset bid process, and you're familiar with that. So by making this, I just want to let you both know, let the game go on and let the best restaurant win. I make a motion, I move to advertise the bid of the Homestead Grill and Tap House to purchase the web theater building for $411,000 through the upset bid process, on the condition that the final bid comes back to the council for final approval and reserving the right to reject all bids. The 5% deposit that Homestead must submit to the city to get this process started is $20,500, and that is my motion.
It is your motion. Is there a second?
Second. And I would like to elaborate on that a little bit, too. Here again, I want to see both of you here. I feel like, too, that the city doesn't need to be in the real estate business, needs to be the private sector that is in the real estate business. We don't need to be in the real estate business, and I certainly are in favor of selling the building and giving it, letting the private sector deal with it and handle it because they have the experience, we don't. So, and I've struggled with this, like I'm sure all of us probably have, because here again, we've got two great entrepreneurs, two great restaurants, okay? And being able to sell that building and turn it into a quality restaurant, and still the city get out from under that liability, then that's why I would second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm not going to vote for that motion. I'm going to, I prefer to have Epic Chop House because I'm really impressed with all that they want to do to the building, to really upgrade it, make it really a first-class place, and that'd be nice to have a first-class place. I respect your motion, Mr. Gallagher. It's not against you. But I've heard both cases, and I like Homestead, too, but I think it's nice to go to have an experience in a restaurant. And I just think that what this gentleman has said he wants to do to the web theater is impressive, and I would be excited to see what all you would do in putting $300,000 on that facility. And so my vote's going to be no on that because I support the Epic Chop House.
All right, sir. Dr. Curl?
Similar to Porter's sentiments, and I think what Todd was maybe alluding to a little earlier is, you know, getting the fit right. We've got two good opportunities, I think both restaurateurs would do wonderfully in the community. I see a lot more similarity between the Homestead's product and other products that are in the existing community. There's nothing wrong with that, but when, does it make some sense to have something a little bit different, something that, again, fits the architecture? So I don't necessarily think we need 2,000 people a week coming through the web theater. You know, I think the web theater is unique and it's special, and I think it would be well worth taking this gem that we have and maximizing its potential. And I do understand that Mr. Marasso says that he will, you know, put $300,000 into it. That brings our tax base up on that property significantly more, and if he does have the kind of sales that he hopes to, then those being sales taxes and property taxes and all the rest that come along with that, if we have a boutique hotel opening up hopefully within the next year, that means that this facility would, you know, match nicely with that. I just see a lot of opportunities there. I'd love to see Byron in this community, and it sounds like he is making commitment to this community to find a location. So it could be a win-win. Mr. Marasso, not so much making that commitment to another piece of architecture unless it's something really special. So one way to get both these fellows might be to accept the Epic proposal and hope that Byron comes through with a similar opportunity with another location.
Okay, sure. Any other comments? We've had a lot. Okay. Well, all in favor, of course, anyone want to hear the motion again?
No.
Okay. All in favor of Mr. Gallagher's motion, raise your right hand, please. I'll raise it. All right, all opposed? Okay.
You have to break the tie.
We start over again. No, there's no tie. It's a?
Mayor, having seen that motion fail?
Yeah.
I would like to enter a secondary motion, and I move to advertise the bid of Epic Chop House to purchase the web theater for $375,000 through an upset bid process with the following conditions attached. A 5% deposit of $18,750 must be submitted to the city now to get the process started. The final bid will come back to the city council for final approval, and we reserve the right to reject all bids. The winning bidder will close on the property within 60 days of the city council's acceptance of the final bid, and the city will finance the remainder, $356,250 owed at 4% interest for five years, with the first monthly payment being due and payable on the first anniversary of the closing, so in actuality, a total of six years, and then on the same day of the month thereafter until paid in full. The final payment will include a balloon payment of approximately $50,000, and the remainder will be secured by a note, deed of trust, security agreement on equipment in the building, and also a personal guarantee.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor of Mr. Pierceall's motion, raise your hands, please. One, two, three. All opposed. It passes, three to two. Let me say, and I certainly don't mind giving my feelings either way, but whether it had won or lost, it was brought up. I don't, after 45 years in the real estate business, I don't like the city being in the property management business. And that's been said before. But you know, that's just like saying I don't like taxes or I don't like some disease or something. It happens and you have to sort of work with it when you, when it absorbs, when it comes in. And try to get out of it the best you can. Seeing that, we've all done that forever. So, certainly, I think your motion, this motion that you have sort of leads that way for five years and so... But it does pass and it will be, Mr. Smith, advertised?
That is correct. It will be advertised under those conditions and the first upset bid would be 393-800.
And I just want to say to both gentlemen, thank you so much. People say it's nice to be in this position to have to make that kind of decision. It's really not. It was very tough. But certainly, both of you are worthy and we welcome both of you in our community. We're very thankful that you both came forward and we did have this opportunity. So, thank you to both of you very, very much.
And I would just like to say, because I've got to finish my report.
Yes, you do.
That it was our privilege, honestly, to have the opportunity to, for both of you to come and want to be part of Gastonia. And hopefully, we will have both of you at some point in time. And we will certainly be looking forward to those days ahead. So, thank you for being here and sharing with us what y'all do and how you do it because it is shared values with the city of Gastonia, both of you. So, I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And let's see. Now, I'm on the item number two, okay? Gastonia Conference Center Financial Report and Update. The Stellar Platinum presented their presentation at the committee meeting. Basically, it boiled down to the third month, they realized an increase in booking for the month by $2,145 compared to events on the books in December. Budgeted monthly revenues fell short by $14,296. But they are moving in the right direction and they're generating some additional bookings and some, a lot of different things that are going on. And we hear good things about what they're doing there. Working with the Sumner Group in a very positive way. So, the committee just took that information and voted unanimously to accept the information for the purpose of the conference center and their monthly update through January 2015. So, I made that in a form of a motion.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion, questions? All in favor? Hand, please. Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor and council members, that's the end of my report.
What? Yeah. You want a break? I do. Five-minute break, if we could, right here, please.
Thank you.
And I will try to make it five minutes. Okay.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and get back in session here. It's, um, let's see what we can do now. It's 8:06. It seems like it's AM. That was, uh, we just finished with item, uh, item five. Uh, we'll now go, Dr. Curlin, to the, uh, item six, Transportation Committee meeting report, which will be exhibit six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, February 24th, and we had several items to discuss. It was a very long, extensive meeting. A lot of good information was, uh, was relayed to us. And for, you know, the sake of time, I'm gonna go through these items fairly quickly. There are actually no items, um, for, uh, for approval or vote. But the first item refers to the Garrison Franklin Boulevard Lane Configuration Evaluation, and this is going on down at the QT across from the Taco Bell down there. And, um, it just so happens that the DOT, NC DOT, is also doing an analysis at this time in that area, and will be providing results to the city once completed. And so the committee accepted this as information and further directed staff to, uh, research accident data in this area, request the anticipated timeframes for the NC DOT to complete their analysis, continue to look at short-term solutions, and contact QuickTrip, and see if a right-in, right-out drive-based solution would be possible. That would be actually out onto Garrison Boulevard, uh, right in on Franklin, right out on Garrison Boulevard. So, um, any questions on that?
Questions?
Okay. Number two, update on solar-powered speed limit detection devices. As you're aware, we have purchased a couple of these, uh, solar-powered portable radar units, uh, as a pilot project, and they've been placed out in various places around the city and have been actually working very well. Uh, they're able to provide us with, um, you know, traffic counts, uh, and the, uh, regarding speed and volume of traffic in these different areas. Um, two smaller battery-operated units have also been purchased that officers can carry with them in their vehicles. Um, so far, we've seen them to be an effective tool in reducing the average speed of traffic and improving safety. Um, but this is an ongoing evaluation, okay? And, uh, the committee accepted this as information. Any questions on that?
Questions?
Okay. The third item, discussion of the Gastonia Municipal Airport. Um, this, uh, this was an update, again, provided, um, to us with regard to the, uh, the ongoing, uh, facilities, uh, evaluation at the airport. And, um, we discussed the customer survey. Um, and this is being revised by the committee to include specific hangar sizes and will be distributed by staff to the airport tenants. Um, we have discussed the types of hangars. You know, in your packet, there's a, a layout of where these hangars could be located. A breakdown of the estimated cost for each type of hangar was provided, with possible revenues from rental fees for new hangars. Um, and that, typically, we receive approximately $150,000 annually for capital improvements at the airport. And, of course, these can be used for general airfield improvements, but usually only after the FAA and state safety improvements have been completed first. Um, projects that require funding above the annual allocation go through the standard STIP approval process with a ranking procedure through the MPO and the state in each year. Improvements such as these are evaluated as part of the city's budget for consideration of local share funding. Um, the committee accepted the information and requested that, um, we have staff prepare a marketing brochure for potential, um, hangar rentals, continuing research of new and rebuilt base unit hangar costs, specifically through actual vendors. We'd received some, uh, proposals or some estimates, but we think those could be improved upon, so we're getting updated, uh, costs for those. Um, evaluation of potential upfits and/or improvements to the terminal building, and also to continue to resolve different fixed-base operator concerns. So, this is an ongoing issue out there, and we hope to improve, uh, the airport management as well as use of the airport with more hangars and more traffic. So, any questions on that?
Question here.
Dr. Curlin, this is specifically a question, I guess, on, on your report, but some of the things mentioned here brought it up. Exactly what are our intentions with that airport? I mean, at the current location, it can only grow so much. So, I don't, I don't have a problem with, you know, making the operation, you know, better to, to, you say, you know, there's concerns, uh, upfits, improvements. Certainly, we want to keep it, you know, nice for those using it, and possibly new hangars would be a little more business. But beyond that, should we be planning for a new airport? I mean, what are we hoping for here?
We want to be as big as Charlotte. Come on.
Yeah, that ain't happening.
Or tell you dope.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Please.
I think it's an excellent question. And one of the things about our airport, and I was involved years ago when we were looking for a new airport. And when you go to build a new airport, that's a 10-year effort, and you're involved with federal funds and state funds, a lot of eminent domain, you know, many acres of land, and it's hard to find that property. It's hard to find that much flat land all put together where you can do that. But that's the, that really gives you that length of runway to build a big general aviation airport that's a full reliever for, for Charlotte. Uh, at least a 5,000-foot runway. It could be 10,000 for, like, like Monroe has. But what we have, our, our airport is constrained by residential development and by schools, like Gaston Day School and the like. So, really, our, we're limited, really, in what we can be. But the airport itself is an entryway to the city. Uh, there are, it's, it can be a niche airport, I think, for, uh, a lot of people that have smaller planes. I think we'll always be limited by the size because of our runway length, but we could still use that airport. One of the ways that an airport can help a city is you, if you have airplanes parked there, and for tax purposes, that, that is taxable and to the city. And it's, it's a way to be able to bring small aircraft in and out, and be able to actually, I think, make some money there. And also to have just another opportunity for people that do flying, some business, but some pleasure. But, but all, but limited because of, of the geography and the development around the airport itself.
Parkdale flies a, uh, I'd take a jet, a small jet, but, uh, it is, you can go out to 7,000 feet, 3,750, you could go out to 7,000 feet, but it's a real constraint because of all the housing on both sides. Mr. Baumdair did a map for me about a year or two ago. Uh, but if we had 7,000, if you had 6,000 to 7,000 feet, preferably 7, they have 7,200, I think, Lincoln. You could have a lot of business jets there, and they drank a lot of fuel. And that's where you make your money, fuel. So, it's a shame that the, that the people that were here before us 30, 40 years ago didn't keep housing from developing around there and figured it would get under Union Road. You cross Union Road, maybe tunnel under that's been discussed. But if we had, had, uh, a longer runway, there'd be a lot of airplanes out there. At one time, there were two DC-3s out there, and they really drank the fuel. Ken Litten had a couple of them out there with fiber controls. And a lot of the neighbors complained, they made too much noise. And so, the council then made them move them, wouldn't let them stay there. But that was stupid, in my opinion. They should have kept them, let those airplanes stay there. Another old-time airplanes like that, because they drank a lot of fuel. The city made money, but the FBO did. So, uh, one thing I think the airport needs, it, it needs a, a training facility, it needs an FBO, fixed-base operator that will have some nice airplanes for rent, that will have some, uh, some instructors out there. But these people hadn't done it. They have old airplanes and, uh, not anything that you'd want to rent, and not many of those. Uh, I just think we need a fixed-base operator that will really upgrade out there and put some nice airplanes for rent. I think we get a lot of people out there taking lessons. And I've, I've got my pilot's license out there back in the 60s when I got out of college. I got my multi-engine and all that, and, uh, I've been, made a lot of landings and takeoffs on runway 321 out there. But I, and I'd still be flying if they had nice airplanes to rent, to go out there and fly around a couple hours a week. But, uh, Todd, you got a good, I've always said we needed a much longer runway. We could have done a lot more things. Now, real quick, years ago, Joe Carpenter and I were on the committee for the county commissioners, and we had some city council members, a couple of them on the committee. And we'd proposed an airport in northwest Gaston County, and off Canal Line Road. It was a lot of land. One landowner had 3,000 acres they wanted to sell on the family. We could have had a nice airport, and the city could have annexed it. And, uh, of course, you had to sell this land, uh, this airport, and the money would have to go toward aviation, which would have gone toward the new airport. But we missed a great opportunity when the council took Pace Mountain, all those towers out there. We had, uh, quite a few of us that came up here at the city hall and protested that, and, and actually changed the election. And, uh, and shut Pace Mountain down. That's a, that's a history of that. And, uh, but it was a bad location. So, uh, but had we gone to northwest Gaston County, we'd had a really fine airport right now. We could, the money was there, the federal and state money. You know who got our money?
Concord.
Concord. And they even have Legion Airlines coming in there now. People in the city Gastonia just weren't forward-looking enough that, uh, that we could have worked with the county, and the county was gonna front the money at that time. And if we could have had a wonderful airport. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
Or we appreciate your historical perspective on that, and, um...
That's too much.
Yeah, so, so I think, you know, you know, in summary, we're, we're just looking to see what's going on out there, and we want to see what's being done well, and what we could improve upon, knowing the limitations that there are. And so, um, so we want to hear from all the stakeholders, and we want to do what we can within our means to improve their experience out there. Okay? Just kind of like fine dining on the tarmac, you know? So, anyway, all right, moving on. Discussion of Court Drive Traffic Issues. Uh, as you know, we've placed a traffic signal there at Court Drive, at Hospital Drive, and that seems to be working well. And, um, there's always been some issues of, you know, speeding out there because we've got that nice four-lane mini, you know, Speedway out there. And of course, with ambulances coming in and out, there's been a concern, so. But staff will continue to keep a surprise of that. Item number five, Transit Update. Um, as you're aware, we have our proposed fare increase to go into effect as of July 1st, um, and that, that has been approved. Uh, the Evaluation of Transit Operations. Um, we currently have an RFQ out to evaluate the overall operations of the Gastonia Transit, um, system, and the estimated cost of this study is $60,000. Eighty percent, uh, will be covered by federal participation, and the city's local share will need to be considered in our, our next budget year. Um, of course, with this, we're communicating with Gaston County in hopes that they will have interest in participating in this, uh, study as well as in maybe expanding the transit system, and maybe they'll also help to pay for part of the study. Uh, Advertising with City Buses, we're working on this. Um, with internal operations of bus advertising being finalized, and we'll let you all know as staff lets us know. Uh, as well as, there was discussions, as you're aware, of a possible hospital, uh, bus route alternative. And although, um, this has been discussed with the, the folks at the hospital, at this point in time, uh, there's no specific plans because there's no specific needs. So, that's about it for number five. Um, number six, Update on the Red Bud, New Hope Traffic Flow. Um, you know, with the, with the new Walmart neighborhood market there, you know, we've been looking at the issues of New Hope and Red Bud and the ingress and egress of that shopping center. So far, staff has, uh, noted no appreciable increase in traffic volumes, no unusual traffic movements. Uh, there does not appear to be any notable impact on Ashbrook High School even during peak times. And of course, staff will continue to monitor this and get back with us if there are any changes. So, and that pretty much ends my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, it's item six. Item seven, Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee Meeting Report, the presentation by Councilman Todd Pierceall, Chairman. The number seven is exhibit seven. It's in there.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee Report. We met Wednesday, March 11th, and, um, we, uh, kind of mixed up our agenda too, so, following this Craig's Committee, we, uh, kind of mixed it up a little bit. So, we're actually gonna start with item number two. And, uh, Attorney Smith, can we vote on two and three together?
If the motion is phrased correctly, yes, sir.
All right, I'll phrase it correctly. Um, you'll see before you, item two and item three are both Offer to Purchase and Contract of City-Owned Properties. Uh, item number two being through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Item three is, um, through the home funds. And, uh, obviously, the potential buyers had to go through the, uh, process that, that is there in place. And, uh, if you, if you looked at your agenda prior, you'll notice the selling price of these two homes, one is $72,800 and one is $70,000. Uh, in my personal real estate opinion, that's very good prices for where those homes are located. And I don't think we should give it a second thought personally. And, uh, just to let you know, Councilman Kimball was not, uh, present. He was out of town. So, you'll see that those votes went two to zero. So, I'd make a motion that we accept item number two, Offer to Purchase and Contract, and item number three, Offer to Purchase and Contract as written in your agenda for approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right. And then, item number one was an ideal grant application, and it was for the Life of Pie Restaurant. And that's Pie, P-I-E. It is an ideal grant application, and it was received from Daniel and Sue Ann Robb, who are planning to open a pizza restaurant in the former location that most people would know as Miller and Casper. It's on the corner of Main and Marietta. And Sue Ann Robb currently operates Running with Scissors. It's the, uh, hair salon, just next door to the location. And, uh, she's been there how many years now, Sue Ann? Three years. Very successful hair salon there. And, um, Daniel Robb is her husband and has 11 years' experience managing a pizza restaurant operation. So, we feel very comfortable with, uh, both their experience in downtown and experience with that type of restaurant. Um, the request was for outfit facade and architectural services, and those grants were total, uh, $5,990, excuse me. And for the ideal budget allotment for fiscal year 2014 and 15, we had $18,200, $7,425 of which was available, available for disbursement. Uh, you might say the committee was in a good mood that day, and we just added $10 and rounded that ideal grant up to $6,000, and it was approved two to zero. And I would like to make a motion that we approve that ideal grant for this, uh, nice young couple that's going to be opening a second business in downtown Gastonia.
And I second that with a, with a comment.
Go right ahead. $10.
They're gonna have delivery in the downtown area.
On bicycles.
Uh, on a bike. Guess what it's gonna be? A bicycle. So, that's gonna be something entirely new and different downtown, uh, in the area. And that was really, really exciting to, to me, as being on the committee, that, that something different, that was outside activity. So, I second that motion.
And Councilwoman Craig has applied for the position.
Who has?
Councilwoman Craig.
Oh, she's going, okay.
Yes.
Question. This is gonna leave 1,000, if we do, if we vote on 6,000, it's gonna leave $1,425 left in the ideal grant. Have, did we hear anything about the bike shop?
Yes, the, uh, right now, and the reason we went ahead and approved this, you know, we're gonna have a new budget year coming up, so this fund will be replaced. Right now, we do not have any applications that would necessitate holding any of this money back. Uh, we also do have some revert, uh, reserve funds with the, uh, with that particular money for the, uh, the municipal service district tax. So, if something were to pop up, we're fine on it. We just felt like with it being, getting near the end of the budget cycle, uh, when you get, when you get a, a business apply, uh, application that's exciting and may be a catalyst for other things, we want to make sure we take care of them and not hold back and say, well, something else may come, and then, then the year you're rolling over that money again.
Right, right.
So, we were like, this is a good idea. It's, it's proven. It's, at the end of the day, it's not that much money.
Okay. I just wanted to know if the bike shop had asked for anything. I know they're moving down from Lincoln, and they're taking over that.
They, they have, um, in, I think, yeah, I was gonna say, is Rachel still, oh, Rachel still here? Rachel could explain that a little bit better. We don't have their actual application, unless it's come in since our meeting.
It has not.
It has not. We are anticipating one.
Yeah.
But there again, we do have reserve funds. If that were to come in before the next budget year, we've got reserve funds to cover their needs.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, let's vote, if everyone's ready. All in favor? All opposed? It's anonymous.
And Mayor, the, the big one for my committee was item number four. It was other business, and we had none.
Second.
So, my report is finished.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, item eight is the City Attorney's Report.
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, City Manager's Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, we gotten two awards, LEED-certified award for two of our facilities. One was the Shield Museum, I think you may have heard, that gold certification, and also just recently now, the Conference Center. And it got a silver certification. As you all know, that has been a long effort there. So, both of these facilities are LEED-certified. And LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. So, we're, we're happy to have that. Also, with regard to the Conference Center, we had a number of the firms that we were talking to request an extension. So, we have moved the deadline for the RFP from March 31st to April 14th, so that they would be able to finish their, their submittals. Uh, also, we're really excited about the governor being here next week with, at Lorre Mill. And along with that, we've gotten a request to look at our house-moving standards, particularly insurance. Uh, we're gonna do that carefully because the city has some rather strict requirements on house-moving in the city. But it may be that if it's a small move just within the neighborhood and it's with historic buildings, uh, some of the houses there in Lorre, that we may be able to amend some of our regulations with insurance to allow for that to happen. So, we're gonna do some work on that, and we'll bring that back at a subsequent meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
That it?
Yes.
All right. City Council Report, Mrs. Craig.
Uh, yes, I do have just a couple of things. I would like to, uh, wish one of our council members, uh, Councilman Curlin, had a birthday on March 13th, I believe. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Friday the 13th.
Friday the 13th.
We're not gonna sing, but we will clap.
No, no. Friday the 13th.
Uh, and, um, I attended the EDC meeting on March the 10th, uh, and as opposed to having the meetings at the Gazette now, they're having them at the Kimbrel Campus in Belmont at the, uh, college over there. And they've got a lot of things going on, but nothing specific that, that can be reported at this time, but it was a, uh, it was an informative meeting. And I would just like to wish happy, uh, St. Patrick's Day to everybody that's listening and to my fellow council members.
Ditto.
And that's my, the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. McEachran?
No report.
No report as such, but at our last meeting, um, Councilman Gallagher stepped off into the Transportation Committee so that I could step on, and, and I indicated that I would need to come off one of mine, and it was the Shield Museum. I know, uh, Councilman McEachran and Councilman Curlin said they both might be interested. Uh, Councilman McEachran said he would gladly do it. I wanted to check and see, are, are you interested? I mean, is it... I'll do it. I'll do it. You would like to do it? So, if, if, I don't know, I wanted to ask, is that something the mayor can just appoint, or do we need to vote that, or?
I believe that's a council appointment, so you need a motion in a second.
Need a motion?
I would, I would, oh, he's gonna make the motion?
No, I said, is there a motion?
Oh, I, I will make the motion to, to appoint, uh, Councilman Curlin to the Shield Board.
Okay. Discussion, second, a discussion? Here's a second. All in favor?
And they, they have a meeting coming up, like, really soon. I don't know if you can attend that one, but I have talked to Dr. Tippett to let her know I'd be stepping down.
Okay.
So...
That it?
That's it. I'm sorry. Yes, that's, that's all. I apologize.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several.
Well, just going outside.
Thank you, sir. Just really one. Uh, went to the Ark Banquet on Friday the 6th, um, and it's for disabled children, and they had a... a silent auction and all, and I was really grateful. My wife was there. She spent an extra $165,000, dollars, not thousand, just 165 extra dollars. But it was good. It was for a good cause, and had dinner there with Mr. Mcateer, Councilman Mcateer himself. And the rest of the time, my wife and I spent down on the beach this past weekend, and that was it, and thank you.
Okay, Dr. Curlin?
Real quick, I believe I saw several council persons at the arts space dedication ceremony the other day, and just wanted to say how excited I am and we are that art space is working its way towards our community, and just really proud of all the community members that have done so much. You know, we had the easy part, relatively speaking, relative to what the rest of the community, the community foundation and folks are doing for this. So we're excited and can't wait for it to get here. Hopefully, they'll get their application approved for their tax credits on the first time around. I guess we'll see. So that should take place in May?
April, isn't it?
April?
I think it's April.
Okay. Yeah, it's coming up, so.
I think it's April.
Yeah, so, but that's the only, that's the only thing I have, so.
Okay. Chief Welch, there's several of us, I think, Ms. Craig, Mr. Craig, and Mr. Mcateer, and Mr. Bridgeman, Ms. Gallagher, and Mr. Miss Kim, that certainly enjoyed the firefighter's ball. And it was, it was a lot of fun, and a good time, I think, was, should have been had by all. It was great. Last thing, I am going to, instead of trying to explain this, I'm going to read this very quickly. This is a, and I'm asking for a motion. This is an email that came in yesterday from Dicky Spargo. He says, "I'm writing about the upcoming dental mission, the Mission of Mercy, M-O-N, that we will be hosting at Bethlehem in September. In the past, the city has been partners with MOM and provided in-kind services to this great service for our citizens. In the past two events that we've had in Gastonia, we've seen over 1,400 patients and over $800,000 in donations. Mission of Mercy provides free dental care, dentures, and x-rays, and as you know, the clients usually spend the night outside at Bethlehem Church to wait to get treated. This is a huge event for our city, and I thank you so much for your assistance in the past." And, of course, he says the dates are September 25th, 26th, and will be held, of course, on their campus. In the past, we've had generators, police, slash, fire services, et cetera. And he's asked for that again, and I'd like to have a motion that we approve that.
I'll make a motion that we approve Dicky Spargo's request for in-kind services for dental.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we could just make sure Mr. Spargo gets with Mr. Wood and completes that paperwork.
Yes, sir. I'll make sure. Yep. And there's a second. Is there a second? Okay. What, go ahead, sir.
Certainly, I think that's a great cause.
Have my support on it, but I was just curious, if we've done it in years past, why did we not get an application and all of that, like we always do with in-kind services?
Well, it's not till September, I guess, maybe is the reason.
Oh, that just struck me as weird. Like you said, I'll support it.
I don't think about it yesterday, but I mean, he'll know that he has to get with Lay Wood and make that application. What, within 90 days?
Yeah. You see, he's got 90 days. He's got plenty of time.
I was just wondering.
He's got plenty of time.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Yes. I mean, I definitely favor it.
Okay. And I'll have some glasses tomorrow. Okay. Anything else?
One question. I noticed in the presentation, Dr. Sifford, in her presentation, said the purpose of her giving the presentation was they would like a voice of support from the city. Should we make a motion in support of that? Or if we are in support of that, I don't know the individual council members, but she said she wanted, you know, a voice or a show of support from the city council, and we kind of just said, "Thank you for coming," and let her go out the door. We never said we supported or don't support it, or, so would it be proper to make a motion of support?
If that is the wishes of the council?
Well, I will make a motion that we publicly show support for the, I, thank you, I was going to say, I had an aunt named Ida May. The LMA Wood Higgins Foundation.
Okay, there's motion to second. Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Got it.
We've got that plaque up there, right, that we dedicated to her when we made the dedication of some of the historical buildings. And if none of you have, I mean, if you haven't seen it, it's really a very interesting copy on the plaque up there, so. It is in West Gastonia.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Get them, Lee. Thank you. Good night.